At this time, I would like to call the July 20th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The first item tonight is a public hearing on the Contract for Excellence.
Terry?
Have Terry come up and present? Thank you, Terry.
Brian, you have the slides?
Like every other presentation, you know, with the mission and pillars of the district to support our mission. But the Contract for Excellence is something that is part of our Foundation Aid. It was enacted in the 2007, '08 New York State budget when they started the large increases in state funding in the form of Foundation Aid, which was the primary form of that increase. Now, you know the history of the Foundation Aid throughout the years. It wasn't being funded properly, but now it's actually properly being funded. But this is nothing new for money that we receive. It's something that has always been a part of our Foundation Aid. It has not increased since 2012, '13 school year, but we're looking at, you know, approximately $14 million of Contract for Excellence, which is part of our Foundation Aid. It's not any additional money. It's just money that's included, that they make you designate certain programs or you focus that money throughout your district. The simplest explanation I can give is basically right off of the New York State website that basically says, over a certain dollar or percentage of threshold, and then we had at least one school with substandard academic performances. The Contract for Excellence program was established to provide additional accountability. So basically, each year, we're required to submit a budget and a presentation in a public hearing to review how we plan on spending that Contract for Excellence money. And then, at the end of the year, we report that to New York State Ed and they approve What we are going to focus our majority of the money on is the increased student time on task, class size reductions, and the middle school, high school restructuring. So we will identify the various schools where we are reducing the class sizes by hiring additional teachers, which has been in place for like the last five, 10 years. In addition, you know, tonight, as you know, approving possibly the SFT contract also identifies class size reductions. And then, increasing the students' day. And in addition, the middle school and high school restructuring. Ms. Rucknick did a presentation back on June 1st, which identified how we are going to restructure the ninth grade. So basically, part of that restructuring for the ninth graders, we're going to use part of that money, a portion of that money, for the supplies, the startup expenses, teacher salaries, and basically all expenses related to the city as our campus, which will include any additional rental fees, any program fees that are being established at the city as our campus, and any transportation expenditures that we see necessary. So if you want any more information basically on the restructuring that was presented on 6-1, but some of those funds through the Foundation Aid will be identified and allocated to those funds. That's basically it. It was a quick public hearing. We had a posting on our Let's Talk website if anybody had any, you know, questions or concerns. This gives them the opportunity to discuss it in further detail. But those are basically the programs and the expenditures that we're looking to target to utilize these funds for. Any questions? And just, you know, Foundation, you know, as you are aware, we're receiving about almost 131 million. So this comprises of almost 11% of our Foundation Aid that we have to earmark it for these programs.
And when the Board got the budget, we had already kind of allocated these things in there. So it's, again, not new money. It's just we have to, we're required to do a formal presentation on it, to submit to State Ed, making sure that they're, that we're clear to the community that this Contract for Excellence money, like Terry said, you've been getting this for almost a decade in the district. But sometimes, some of the requirements around the hearing weren't always necessarily real intentional, and so we wanted to address that and be intentional with it because we do have to submit to the state and they want to know, when was the hearing? You know, you know, when did you discuss it? And that kind of stuff.
So basically, we have, basically, we have the, it's fluid enough, flexible enough, that we can use it for just about anything we generally use our general fund for.
Yeah, these are the areas of focus that we can use it for. You know, we could allocate money also to, you know, the pre-K program, but we do use federal grant money for that. So it's basically general fund expenditures related to these programs as we deem necessary. And we're actually targeting those three highlighted areas in the 22, '23 budget.
Any other questions? Thank you, Terry. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the updated Code of Conduct or Code of Character? I was a former teacher, so have good wait time.
Or the Contract for Excellence.
Or the Contract for Excellence. Okay. That will close the public hearing. So I accept the motion. So approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Approval of the minutes. The minutes of the July 7th, 2022 Board of Education meeting are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved to Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Priscilla. Additions, corrections, discussion?
I did have one. I did notice on the Vice President election that Board Member Jamaica essentially voted yes, and she was not here, and I'm blank. I just wanted to make the correction on that.
I'll fix that, thank you.
So it's got to be flip-flop. I think the names were wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Privilege of the floor. We do have one person signed up, and before we begin, I just want to mention a statement. So, good evening, community members. We're about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the Board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the Board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues, if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at an appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize the right that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on several issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of the school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a respectful manner and demonstrate respectful, mutual respect. In that spirit, we insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain respect for any divergent views that others possess. Please be aware that disrespectful comments or comments of a personal nature directed at an individual, such as an employee or a BOE member, either by name or inference, will not be permitted. If this occurs, you will be asked to end your comments. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the Board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the Board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the Board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period, if you choose to do so. The Board will now welcome public comments. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. So I welcome Portia Austin? Alston, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Portia Alston. I am the first Vice President of the Schenectady Branch NAACP. And I'm here, excuse me, on behalf of Reverend Nicole D. Harris, who was the President of the branch. And I'm just going to read the statement that she has rewritten on behalf of the branch. Dear Board of Education members, prior to tonight's meeting, we received a formal complaint from an employee. The complaint states that the events and documentations regarding his or her termination from the Schenectady City School District have racial and retaliatory overtones. The Schenectady NAACP Number 2175 would like to ask you to reconsider the employee's employment status based upon what has already been stated and the following. The employee has indicated that the allegations against him or her are not true and that she was not given due process. A letter from Superintendent Solar dated June 29th lists several complaints, but does not outline any progressive disciplinary steps. The Schenectady City School District has struggled to address the district's racial disparity between students and teachers. As quoted from a Daily Gazette article published November 23rd, 2021, "Education officials officially unveiled a new pathway program designed to make obtaining an education degree easier while hopefully addressing the racial disparities between teachers and students within the Schenectady School District. We presume that this objective to address disparities should be considered when trying to retain African-American teachers that care for and want to serve our students. Therefore, we hope that the employee can be given an opportunity to continue her employment by extending her probation and suggest that a committee be formed to seek resolution. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, and I thank you for hearing me this evening."
Thank you, Ms. Alston. Thank you. We also have, yep, you can come on. Two employees who would like to speak. And if you don't mind sharing your name when you come up? Quentin Thompson. Thank you, Quentin.
You can give them to the clerk. Give them to the clerk.
Hello. How's everybody doing today?
Good evening.
Quentin, just restate your name so that people at home can hear it.
Quentin Thompson. I work for the Schenectady School District, also a resident of the Schenectady. We are here to enlighten the district of the events that have been happening to our unit. We understand we are not here to speak on those acts today, but we also understand that we could present and make the district aware of the situations. Furthermore, we would like to state that we enjoy and love our position here with the Schenectady School District. We are here to voice our opinions to make, excuse me, I'm sorry. I have a scroll down. We are here to voice our opinions to make things better, being employees of the district, a resident of the district, and also parents to children who attend schools of the district. The paper being presented to you all today shall give you a small amount of the situations we face as a unit. I would like to thank you guys for your time. God bless and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Quentin. This concludes our public comments. On behalf of the Board, we want to thank everyone for their comments. Thank you. Superintendent Solar?
Good evening, Board members. Just a couple of updates. Obviously, summer is in full swing, so I just wanted to provide a quick summary and welcome officially Vivian Parsons to the Board. I was not here at the reorganization, so I apologize. So officially, welcome to the school board. In the summer enrichment update, we have about 1,600 students currently enrolled. Staff continue to make outreach efforts and calls to students, and now we're working on our waitlist and trying to get more students involved who may be on a waitlist, since we have had some students not show up at this point. But hard work occurring with the Office of Planning and Accountability and the Office of Innovation, Equity, and Engagement to make sure that we're maximizing our total numbers. Today was a hot day, so I do want to give a shout-out to the summer enrichment staff. It's going to be a hot rest of the week. Water was delivered to all the sites, additional water. We moved programs around, made sure they were in AC-conditioned spaces or in spaces that were much more cooler than traditional settings. So not a lot of stuff was going on outside today, and that was on purpose. But I do want to compliment the efforts of Dr. Koto and his team for making sure that water was delivered, and with the summer heat index, we even closed the track this afternoon. So I just want to make sure that we continue to monitor that. I also want to make a plug that the Office of Innovation, Equity did go out and attend the New York State Council of School Superintendents Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Conference. Damani, Brian Ledbetter, and Alfred Tompkins, along with Dr. Koto, ended up going out there, and Kathy Lewis was also there. So they ran into Kathy there, so I do want to compliment them on our efforts to continue to learn best practices across the state and figure out what more we can bring here. Specifically to Schenectady, our Anti-Racism Task Force is scheduling a retreat in sometime in early August, finalizing that agenda. So I do want to, we'll share that information with the Board as we get closer to that timeframe. I think Oriana Miles is leading that work with that group. We also have kicked off our work with tangible development around our training, and the first group that will be trained will be the Executive Leadership Team. We'll start, and then we'll start working through various divisions, and that's scheduled for later this month. Nice little plug that I'm not sure you're aware of. This year, we partnered with the mayor to do a mayor's summer youth employment program. We have 75 high school students employed, working in jobs above minimum wage, doing some really cool things. Today, Principal Green and Dr. Koto met with the mayor and the Daily Gazette to have some student reporters start working, so it's going to be pretty cool. But we, the mayor has invested about $300,000 to employ as many city kids as possible in jobs within the city of Schenectady. And I do want to elevate our partnership with Schenectady Connects. They have done a great job with helping us with some of the behind-the-scenes paperwork and placing kids, so I do want to uplift them that. And definitely recognize City Council, who put this money aside for our kids as well, along with the mayor's vision. So I do want to make sure that we continue to uplift this. And we will have a report at the end of the summer of what these 75 kids did, so they can share with you. Some of them are juniors, some of them are seniors, and so we're excited and we hope to grow this every year to guarantee summer employment for some of our youth. Our community school initiative did have its, obviously, its kickoff meeting, but they also had their first kind of subcommittee meeting. We had 40 community partners at the second meeting, along with some members of the Office of Innovation, Equity, and Engagement. The next meeting is tomorrow, and so if you want to attend, definitely reach out to Dr. Koto. But we're going to be meeting again August 4th from 4:30 to 6:30 for the advisory at the Boys and Girls Club. We also had 60 kids participate in our soccer and volleyball athletic programming that Mrs. Miranda has put together. Again, this is all free opportunities for our kids to play sports, to be in organized places with some of our coaches and some of our other programs. We're trying to increase enrollment and engagement in some of these sports. And I know tonight, the Board's going to be looking at a revision of policy to help us with some of that work. And so, but what I do want to uplift is our Varsity Girls took some leadership roles in working with our younger players, and so we're trying to grow those programs. So I definitely want to recognize that. This week is tennis. Obviously, today was a little hot, but next week is a good one, swim and football, and then registration opens up.
It'll probably be 20 degrees.
Registration opens up for fall sports on Friday, July 22nd. It's done online, so if you want to have, play a sport, family ID, please make sure you register. And then, there's so far about 50 kids that participated, mostly middle school, which is really big for us as we try to grow our modified and middle school program. I do want to thank the Schenectady Old Timers Baseball Club. I'm not sure if you know this or not, but they held a free baseball clinic for our kids in our community at the Central Park Diamond. And then, last but not least, do want to uplift our work with the Hamilton Hill Art Center. We are scheduled to be a part of a back-to-school community fair at Jerry Burrell Park on August 20th. So more details to come with that. And last minute addition is the Chief Clifford's doing a national night out on August 2nd from 4:00 to 9:00, also at Jerry Burrell Park. And so, we will share on our various outlets to make sure that we have great representation. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members?
I have, over the last two weeks, I have attended the Rural School Boards Association meeting in Cooperstown, and one might ask, why would I be attending a Rural School Boards Association meeting? But in my role as a NISBA Director, I represent a large number of rural schools, as do most directors. We probably have over 350 school districts in the state of New York that would be classified as rural schools. Rural schools in small cities actually share very common themes, very common issues. And so, it was a very helpful conference to attend. I had the pleasure of hearing Dr. Bill Daggett, and I passed some information on to Anibal with regard to his presentation, which had to do with, he was one of the co-chairs of the National Commission, looking at what education should be in the 21st century, but how you do education without using 20th-century techniques and methods and so on. I mean, as he started out his presentation, he lifted this up and said, did you have this 30 years ago, this cellphone? The answer, of course, was no. People did not, and they certainly didn't have the characteristics of it. 3GT, I think, is something that they talk about now as something has come on. And of course, AI is one aspect of that. Artificial intelligence is one aspect of it. So I'm hoping that he will be able to present to the Schenectady City staff, because as I just pointed out to Anibal, he lives here in the Capital District area. He lives about two miles from here. So it was quite a worthwhile conference. And then, last week, as was mentioned, I was down, actually, last week, it was really yesterday, we got back from the Ithaca where we had the conference, and four of the staff people were there. And I was there once again in the role of a NISBA person who has co-chaired the Committee on DEI for NISBA. And part of what I think we wanted to accomplish was hear what superintendents would like Board members to know about DEI. I mean, we have a broad understanding, I think, as a Board member, but you start digging into things, and I've been looking over the last year and a half or more about, with a framework, trying to understand a framework to have conversations about that. There are 3,500 Board members in the state of New York, and everybody is in a different place with regard to this subject, and we want to get some common language, common ground, and have that, have those conversations. So this was one part of that effort. Tomorrow, I'm overwhelmed, but I'm attending a law conference on the updates in the various cases that have come before the Supreme Court and other cases in the state of New York that affect education. And the Summer Law Conference is held every year, and then there's one also at the October convention, actually technically in advance of the convention, that gives Board members an update on issues that might be relevant to our Board work. And so, that's kind of where I am.
Thank you, Kathy. Next Board member?
No comment.
No comment.
I just want to wish our students a happy summer. I hope they're enjoying it, along with our families. And I'm glad we're giving out water, because it's very hot this week. And that's it.
Thank you, Priscilla. No comment at this time?
All right. So first, I wanted to point out one of the items that I found on our website, which is that the district is working alongside the Electric City Food Co-op, and that there is a survey regarding or concerning healthy food systems. So for any of the parents and anyone interested, if you could fill that out, I think that would be fantastic. Another find was the Financial Literacy Course through Better Neighborhood, sorry, Better Neighborhoods. Looks like it's starting the first weekend in August, and it's going to run a total of five weeks for about an hour and a half. So definitely some really good information to be held or had there. As a reminder, because I just notified my sister-in-law, the universal pre-K application for three-year-olds, I believe, closes on the 22nd, right? July 22nd at 9:00 a.m. So if you haven't had a chance, please fill out that application and get it in. And then, just kind of piggybacking off of what Board Member Kathy said, I'm looking forward to our Board Retreat on the 23rd. Just an opportunity for us to kind of grow as a governance board and move forward, I think, in a nice fashion for the 22, '23 school year. And then, in addition to that, I do look forward to, I believe it's, NISBA's hosting the Leadership in Education, August 12th and the 13th, which I'm hoping to get a lot from.
See you there. Thank you, VP Nohalani. And I just have a few that haven't been touched on. On August 25th, Schenectady High School Summer School graduation will take place here in the auditorium, so congratulations to those that are graduating. I did want to kind of add a little bit more to the Board Retreat. Our facilitator is a great facilitator. His name is Sean Douglas from NISBA. And some of the agenda items that we're going to be talking about are roles and responsibilities, team development, goal setting, and planning. So we are all excited to come together and really work on ourselves as a team. The other piece that wasn't mentioned that I did want to mention is that, starting August 17th, our Board meetings will start at 6:30 moving forward. Okay? All right, so that's August 17th, our next Board meeting at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. So next, we're doing the building condition survey, and I apologize if I mispronounce one of the last names. So Mr. Little, and I saw the smile, so you know which one I'm going to mess up, sorry. Mr. Etchison? Close? Okay.
We call him Alistair.
Alistair? From CEI Design Group. Welcome.
Also with us today is Matt Scholes. He's one of our partners.
Hi, Matt.
First time.
They left you off the list, Matt. Rich and Alistair.
But you're important to us.
So this, just for the Board to know, the presentation has a lot of pictures, so it was a little large to share, so you may want to just turn and watch it. And then, if you have questions, I'm not sure Rich's format, if you want to do it at the end or as we go along, but there's a lot of information here.
So as always, thank you very much for having us here with you today. We are going to cover a lot of information. We'll, I'll try to move through it as quickly as we can. We are going to touch on 18 buildings. We will talk, this is a high-level overview of what we've been working on since joining the partnership with the district and looking at all the buildings. This is the collective data of all of your existing conditions. So it's kind of a snapshot of where the buildings are today. And the costs that we'll be talking about in overviewing are the things that would be, you know, would, it would take to repair and replace those items. Each one of those items have yet to be ranked. You've had, Brian has joined your district as Chief of Facilities here, so he's been folded in already and going to continue to work with us on the next steps, and we'll get into those. So we're going to cover the BCS, just a quick update on the utilization plans that we've been working with the district on, some current projects going on at the high school, federally funded projects, and then emergency projects. So BCS, for anyone that is not aware of that, BCS is the Building Condition Survey. Districts are required to do this every five years, and please feel free to ask any questions as we move along, so I can make sure you get all the information that you need. And then we're also required to put out a five-year capital improvement plan at the conclusion of the BCS. And we'll be looking at immediate needs, five-year need, 10, 15, 20. Ultimately, we want to develop a master plan of where we want to where we want to see the district go. It's required every five years, looks at each one of the buildings. The district has contracted us as the architects, we have our consultants that join our teams with us, engineers that go out and look at all the components and add to that. All districts are required to submit this. How we do them? We we have boots on the ground, so we actually walk out, and the three of us here are part of the team, we've walked every inch of your buildings. We have other staff members that are out there with us helping. We've covered all of them, our engineers cover your buildings. We also work on interviewing and meeting with your staff. We've met with building principals, building-level custodians, people that are working in the buildings. There's a tremendous amount that we can see by visually looking at a building, but when working with the people that are actually in it, we get a lot more data, and it's more conclusive information. This is just a snapshot, we are not going to try to go through this, but this is just a snapshot of the report that comes out to us on each one of the buildings. And then each one of these line items are deficiencies and elements in your buildings and things that we need to work on. I've kind of summarized it for each one of these buildings, and again, I'm not going to read each item, but we just want to kind of give you a snapshot of what's going on in the buildings.
You go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
So what, as part of the Building Condition Survey, SEI gives us basically a, for lack of a better, a binder that has every school, line by line, everything that was found from a broken window frame, faucet, whatever is infrastructure, whatever is visibly needs to be addressed, everything is listed, and then there's a projected cost. And so that's the prior, that's what he talked about earlier, about Brian having to go through and prioritizing what needs to get done. So I just want you to know, this lives with us, they hand this to us, we have this, and this guides the work for the next, you know, five years or so before the next Building Condition Survey.
So and a key thing to add to that is that it's a living document, okay? This document will stay active and be live all the time. We're continually updating costs, we're in a very volatile market right now for all construction-related items. So we're going to continue to update this and move this as we go along and move forward, so it's not going to be stagnant. Also, this is, there are a few program items in here, but the majority of what we have in our database currently is is specifically needs. So floors that need to be refinished, mechanical equipment that needs to be replaced or repaired, all those types of items. Ultimately, as we start moving forward onto the next steps, we're going to develop this into a living document that's going to include program improvements. You know, what kind of projects do you see that you want to look at? And we'll be able to test them out and look at them from a cost perspective through this system, so that we understand what the prices are going to be, and then how we can put them together to maximize any work that we want to do, including your building condition items. And and then also to try to look forward, so that if we're working in an auditorium like this, we're not missing those items that you might miss just by by not doing the deep dive we've done. So we'll start with Martin Luther King, structural repairs. You'll see on the second item there, there's some cracking in the in the precast. The window system there is actually rough-cut two-by-fours with a single pane of glass that is that's notched into them. It's a very inefficient system, so we we've definitely recommending that we replace that. Some millwork in the following picture, there's a lot of upgrades for the heating cooling distribution system throughout that building. So even though we've we've done a lot of work on this building, you can see that there's still a significant amount of needs. The estimated, and again, this is an estimate, and just our our draft version that we're working with today, of a need in the right corner of $6 million. This chart here kind of breaks down where those needs are, and you see the largest portion of the pie is your HVAC and systems throughout the building. That's more than half of the needs. But you can see throughout, and this pie chart is typical for all of the buildings, obviously it'll change according to the needs, but you can see it piled up between HVAC, plumbing, electrical, accessibility, so ADA requirements, environmental, site features, building envelope, and building interior. And you'll see as we look at this, this kind of just gives you a quick reference, you'll see the differences in the buildings.
What does building envelope mean?
Building envelope, your exterior walls, so anything that closes in the outside skin to keep the weather.
Good question.
Got it, thanks. I was thinking, because you had interior but not exterior, but I was going to ask anyway, I don't want to assume.
Hamilton, and if I'm going too fast or jumping, please shout, but I want to be respectful to everybody's time. Hamilton Elementary School, the BCS needs, again, there's some structural repairs. This is the underside, the top photograph is actually the underside of a concrete slab, suspended slab. And you're seeing not only the hole, but the deterioration exposure of the reinforcement that's in there. The second picture down is the exterior of the building, and that's the cast stone or the architectural stone trim, and some of it's cracking and heaving away. Of larger concern is the last picture on the bottom, there's been some significant roof work done on the building, and where the capstone on top of it is deteriorating. And the problem here is that that deteriorated capstone, if it should completely disappear, you've got nothing stopping the moisture that's going to get into those buildings. So you not only have to worry about the roof itself, but all these elements around it. Additionally, there's some classroom toilets for kindergarten rooms, gymnasium air handling units, and then site around, you'll see this commonly in a lot of areas, concrete walks that need to be repaired, and parking lots redone. This is at Hamilton, we have about $3,781,000 in needs. You can see here, it's not as much HVAC, there's a little more on the exterior of the building, because we're looking at the significant deterioration of the stone. Howell Elementary School, Howell is an extremely beautiful stone and brick building, but along with that, all of our buildings, most of our buildings are masonry. You can see in the top picture, the the challenge with moisture as it builds up and gets into the brick. You're seeing what's called efflorescence on the top picture, that's the white chalk on the face. That's a direct sign that moisture is getting in there. Second picture is some of the decorative stone up in the roof area where it's heaving and the water's getting into it and starting to break it apart. And then the the lower image is one of the one of the towers with the with the very unique gargoyle elements that are on that. And it is, when you're up there looking at it up close, they are still in pretty good shape, but some of that is starting to show weather and needs to be protected. So again, a lot of exterior masonry restoration at this building, flooring, kindergarten toilet rooms here, security cameras, and the asphalt drives and concrete walks. You can see here, there's a little more HVAC on this pie, we're looking at a total of about $4,700,000. Zaller, there in Zaller, there's these, the top picture is actually old doors that are no longer allowed in schools. They they pull out and close off the hallways. So it it was originally intended to be a security element to stop people from traversing through buildings. However, if somebody is traversed into those spaces, you could be trapped, so we can't have those. So those are things, and there's a few in the high school that are similar that we need to make sure we get rid of. Second image is some wiring that we're working on that's in one of the cabinets. There's some other photographs coming up of breakers, old breaker systems. And the final photograph there is a hole actually in the roof, just to the right of the corner of the copper square there, you can see about a half-dollar size hole. So removing the cost quarter doors, roofing repairs, obviously, the millwork, replacing toilet fixtures throughout the building. At Zaller, the needs are estimated around $9.1 million. You're going to see, you see in this trend, there's a lot of mechanical needs throughout the buildings. Some of the other challenges that are a pretty common thread are your plumbing systems, your domestic water line and your sanitary water lines. These are old buildings, and those are original construction, and we need to work on them. Lincoln Elementary School, stairs and handrails, they don't meet today's current codes, so we have to rework the handrails. The second picture, you can see a significant brick in the crack, crack in the brick, that is directly related to water and moisture impact from the lintel. And the lower photograph there, this is looking towards the clock tower. It's a little bit difficult in this picture to see, but there's an insulation system that was added to the face of the brick, and there's extreme deterioration because of a product that was applied to it. So there's a lot of work that has to be done to that area, and there's a few sections of roof left still to update in this building. On Lincoln, we're looking at $11.4 million in in estimated improvements. Page Elementary, creating a secure vestibule, there's a, there is a large vestibule area there, but we want to recommend that we do meet that. The top-left picture, you can see the efflorescence on the brick. There's some exterior doors that are deteriorated, tough to open, they need to be replaced. And then this is one of my favorite pictures in the bottom-left, the old circuit breakers, the the old fuses to plug in there. My comment to everybody was, at least we didn't find a penny in one of them. The needs at Page Elementary are $20,122,000. Pleasant Valley Elementary School, masonry restoration, again, it's very common with these types of buildings. You're seeing in the top picture, there are also some deterioration of some of the exterior soffits. The second photograph down is some heaving floor tiles, cracking in floor tiles that have exceeded their life cycle. And then again, the lower photograph is the exterior wall, and just with some moisture that's getting in through the window systems in that building and the exterior, we're seeing the plaster starting to pull away from the wall. There are a number of ADA accessible items here, mechanical upgrades, radiant heat, water, sanitary sewer. And somehow, my total didn't make it on this one, I apologize. I'll have to circle back, remember Pleasant Valley, unless you can grab that quick. Van Collier, masonry restoration, the top photograph is showing the the efflorescence in one of the sills. You can see that right between the two windows, the stone there is actually heaving forward, and moisture is not only getting underneath it, but pushing it out. Second photograph is some deteriorating toilet stalls that are that won't close and adjust. And then the lower photograph, although it is a beautiful boiler, because the detail that was put in such an old unit, it has outlived its life and starting to cause trouble there. So we've got toilet partitions, it's an antique, new mechanicals for this building, building-wide. This building has an estimate of $12.1 million. Keene, all building entry steps are in deteriorated condition, so every one of your points of entry on this building, the concrete is spalding, the treads are coming away, handrails are starting to get rough. There's the next photograph is a lighting control device. And the the third image is the older windows, the single-pane windows that need to be replaced. So masonry restoration, scraping and dealing with the lintels, replacing the windows, air handling units, mechanical systems, especially in the annex at this building. We're looking at roughly $10 million, $10.2 million in needs in this building. Okay, so Pleasant Valley was roughly $5.5 million. And we'll come back, I'll summarize this all to you. Woodlawn Elementary, Woodlawn is the entire, if you look at the top photograph, this is one of the, you can clearly see in here, the entire facade above the windows is is water damaged and deteriorating, starting to fall apart. So that whole upper piece of the building, all the way around, is in pretty rough shape. The mechanical equipment here has a number of units that need to be replaced. And then some of our plumbing, you can see the corrosion on this relief valve here. So we've got ADA accessibility and upgrades for toilet rooms, kitchen upgrades, room finishes, air handling units. The cost at Woodlawn Elementary is roughly $15.8 million. You notice on this one, even though we have air handling units, mechanical is a little bit smaller piece of the pie, but on this one, the building envelope and the interior costs are a little bit higher. Yates, repairing cracks, there's some cracks that are developing in the auditorium columns and walls. There's some mechanical equipment, again, another antique in the top photograph there. The second photograph down is showing some water damage and deterioration up on a roof level, where some of the exterior panels are failing. And then the next photograph down is picking up the windows, the non-thermally broken older windows that are in there as well. Air handling, ventilation systems, domestic water and sanitary upgrades, and the spelling area, I apologize. The estimate for Yates is about $12.2 million. Central Park Middle School, the top photograph is a door. There's a tremendous amount of hardware throughout this district that is still knobs. We need to get rid of those and bring ADA compliant lever-type handles. But more of the the bigger issue is the deadbolt that's been attached to the top of that door. They are absolutely not not allowed in these, in this, in this use for sure. The next one down is a snap of some of the array of different floor finishes and deterioration that's been patched and trying to work along with. The photograph to the bottom-left is the chimney and the restoration that's required on the chimney. The photograph to the right is some more damage from moisture getting into the building and the plaster starting to deteriorate. So we've got door and hardware, patching the plaster, upgrading the hot water, electrical distribution systems throughout this building. The estimate on Central Park is about $4.8 million. Mount Pleasant Middle School, masonry restoration, repairing of the steel lintels and masonry. That would be the bottom photograph, again, you can see the precast, and you, where the, once the steel starts to get exposed, then there's a lot of challenges for the chances for that to deteriorate further, so we want to get to those quick. The chimney there, this is the old chimney on the back of the building that actually pinches down the driveway. That chimney is no longer in use and can actually come down. One of our recommendations is that we look at that as we start looking across the district. If we take that down and open that up, that could really help a pinch point in the back of that building for circulation and access. So that's a a good future discussion that we can have as we move through. There's some cornice profiles on this building, it's a beautiful decorative facade, and it's, needs some painting up in those areas. Kitchen renovations, there's a challenge getting deliveries to this kitchen, it is up on an elevated floor. And the only way to get everything up there is in a very small dumbwaiter, which is really like a breadbox, it's very inconvenient for them. Toilet rooms, and then domestic water and and building communication. For Mount Pleasant, we're looking at $8.4 million in needs. And you can see this one here, again, it's, building interior is more of the need on this building. Oneida, masonry restoration, exterior window system is is a problem here. Renovation of locker rooms, sanitary system, and then milling and topping the asphalt lot. The photograph to the left, top-left, is actually a situation where it used to be a raided soffit built out of out of drywall. Somebody over the years has deteriorated and cut into it, it's now open, so we we need to make sure we fix that. The second photograph is again an example of the steel lintel inside the, above a window, that's starting to pop a little bit, needs to be cleaned. And then the lower one is actually a rolled-type linoleum floor that's buckled up and peeling away in one of the locations there. At Oneida, we have about $6.3 million in needs. Schenectady High School, two of the wings, and it's it's continuous in a couple of other locations in that building that didn't get renovated, but two significant wings and then a couple of other points. The original window system from when those buildings were built is a continuous steel frame system, non-thermally broken, challenging to open. And there's a number of issues with the type of glass that's in those. Somebody did apply an EPHUS coating on the outside to help with the thermal issue with that unit, but it would, it really needs to be upgraded and replaced, it's going to have immediate impact on the environment of those spaces. But that glass actually goes from the floor all the way to above those windows up to the to the roofline ceiling. Second picture is some damage to lockers, you see a little bit of that throughout the building. And then this bottom picture here is a unit that's tucked into one of the storage rooms. And actually, when I first saw it, I didn't think it worked, and we were in there a couple of weeks ago with Tyrone walking around, and we, the unit is actually still turning air, so it does work, but it's a it's a challenge.
Those are original lockers, correct, from when they were originally?
Yep, yeah, this building is, and and we see this across your district in a lot of places. There's been a lot of, lot of good things done, a lot of good things done across it, but there's a lot of areas that haven't been touched since they were originally built. And there's some. And there's some disparity between some buildings that have gotten a lot more attention and some buildings that haven't. And it's very evident in the data that came back out from our visits and the, and the cost we're seeing. And we can lay those out for you as we go along. That'll be part of the plan to ensure that we, we look at how to best attack all those When you look at the high school, you're looking at almost eighty-one million dollars in needs at this building alone. And I think, if I can remember correctly, the windows alone are probably twelve to, twelve to twenty million to do windows in that building.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Any of the buildings that you've gone over so far, are there any immediate needs in regards to safety or security of those buildings?
A great question. And what I'll share with you, and we'll follow up a little more on it later on, is that we've been working directly with the administrative team, your security consultant, who we partner with all across the state, looking at all those items exactly. And we have a meeting, if not this Thursday, somewhere in the next couple of days, weeks, to do a follow-up check on all the work that they have been doing to ensure that when we start opening this school, we know exactly where all those holes are and what we've done to address them. Unfortunately, again, there's a challenge with getting doors, to fixed doors. So we're going to be working together with the security consultant, your team here in house, and any of the people that we have access to, to assure that we've got a plan in place for what we need to do between now and August, or September sixth?
Seventh.
Seventh, thank you. To make sure that those things are addressed. But yes, they have been.
Yeah, and just Vivian, you're not aware, there are projects already occurring to handle some of those things, like we're doing, you know, boilers, secure vestibules in some of schools where there's no way to secure the door when they come in, people can go right into the building. I think you talked about that a little bit with Page. So we're doing what we can, prior, high priority. What you're going to see here is that's included in here. And then, this will create a plan for the next kind of capital big project for the, for the district. So I think the last one, you did like, you know, you did staircases at Pleasant Valley, you did some work at Yates. And so, we're going to have to come up with a plan based on what's here. But anything that's like life-threatening safety gets done either through an emergency project, which we'll kind of share some of the emergency projects. And then, anything safety, we, we deal with it, even though it's on the list, we'll deal with it ahead of time.
Okay.
And just real quick, when was the last major project when you guys did your work for the high school? Because eighty-one million dollars is a big price tag, but it's because of time.
Part of that is that the high school was phase three
Yeah.
of the, of the projects we started ten years ago.
Correct.
And the high, the, the, just for background, the middle schools were tackled first and reconfigured and put into more pods in the schools, for example, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And then, the following project, that was about a seventy million dollar project. Then, it was sixty-four million dollars put into the eleven elementary schools where needed, you know, as, as much as we could do within the building, maximum building allowance and, and all of those kinds of things. And then, the high school was to be tackled for phase three at this point. That's why that's such a huge number. We did do, I think HVAC things over here on the top of this.
And there was the recent addition on the far end for the arts and, and system over there.
John Seals.
Yep, so again, it goes.
And then, there was a fourth phase, and that was to go back and start all over again.
Start all over again. It's kind of just, you know, it's, we, we all have a house that we're, you know, taken care of, or somewhere that we are, and, and this is unfortunately of eighteen, so it's a, it's a Herculean effort. I guarantee that if we do a masonry restoration at any one of these buildings, as soon as we're done, we're going to come back and do one again. It, masonry is beautiful, it's durable, it lasts, however, you have to take care of it. We don't have to paint it, you know, you don't have those types of chores, but you still have chores of, of that.
Yeah. I just wanted it for context, because sometimes people see eighty-one million and they say, why so much? But it's because it hasn't been touched in the last ten years as part of the capital project, which compounds the problems.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and that's, when you mentioned the things that are already on this list, and I told you, this is a living document, so the great thing is, is we'll be able to track them and say, complete. So that's done. So we'll start looking at this list and be able to prioritize them and organize them based on that. Jumping to Steinmetz now, we've got masonry restoration, toilet room upgrades there, they don't meet, some of them don't meet ADA, but some of them are just cramped and undersized. Some of the fixtures need to be replaced in this building. There's door hardware replacements. There's a tremendous amount of efflorescence on your stair towers in this building. It's actually, and there's enough moisture getting in that it's not only on the outside, but it's pushed through on the inside of the staircases. Mechanical ventilation here, there is a, some moisture issues relative to one of the classroom spaces adjacent to the courtyard. And then, upgrading domestic water and fire alarm. We're looking, the budget here, the estimate here is twenty-two million. Again, on this building, we do have some significant needs on the outside, but the heavier chunk of work is, is the HVAC and mechanical systems. Washington Irving, structural repairs. You can see the, the top-left photograph, the spalding concrete off of the, you can see the exposed reinforcement is the reddish color line. ADA accessibility needs. Again, this is another building that has some of these corridor doors. The second, second photograph down is old rolling shutters that they used to have there. We need to get them out of that building. And then, the lower is some pumps in the basement. There's quite a bit of, of service work that needs to be done on the, on the old infrastructure to this building. There is sixteen point nine million dollars estimated on this building.
And the biggest thing there was ADA compliance, one of the biggest things was?
Correct. There's a, there's a big chunk of accessibility, because currently, there's one entrance to the one floor, but we can't get you to the other areas.
There's no elevators.
Fulton School, the exterior windows, you can see in the top picture, it's just a close-up picture of one of the frames, and you can see the deterioration in the paint and the materials. The second photograph is the underside of one of the precast lintels, and it's spalled off to expose the reinforcement in it. And then, the lower photograph has some wall deterioration that you can see, but also the age and vintage of the electrical system distribution. The good thing is, is that this building does have power coming to it. So the, the system that feeds the buildings, and we did do a check on all of your buildings for that, but it's, once it's at the building, the distribution hasn't been upgraded. So if you were to use this space to bring classrooms in, and I know there was some students in here a few years ago for, I think when Hamilton was working, right?
Swing space, yes.
Yep, we used it as a swing space, which it worked great for that. But there is some challenges with power throughout that building. The needs in this building are about seven point nine million. This is a snapshot of the whole summary. Totalling it up, this, this scope of work that we've just kind of talked about is roughly two hundred and fifty-nine million dollars in needs across the entire eighteen buildings. That includes some of our site needs, our pavement, our exterior. And then, this, this is inclusive, including construction, capital improvement costs. So this takes into effect not only the construction value, but also the incidental burdens that would be on a project, is, you know, total cost of these scopes. Now, this is everything that we've looked at in the snapshot from today. This is not saying that there are two hundred and fifty-nine million dollars worth of needs that have to happen tomorrow. This is saying that these are things that we know are going to project. We know that some of these units are about old enough that in five, ten years, they're going to start to fail, you're not going to be able to get parts. So this is, this is a total master list of these needs. Now, what we're going to do is rank them. And from that, we'll talk, we'll jump into the next now. So where, where do we go from here? Where are we? We're way up here on the far left, the planning is just starting. So basically, what we've done is now we've got a picture of where we are and what the needs are. Now, we need to talk about it, where is our venture going to take us? Where are we headed? What are our needs? And that starts to look beyond just the building needs. We start talking with the administrative team, working with user groups, and start talking about what do we need? How do we make this space better? Are there areas that we're not providing educational space well that we could do better? Some of that, we had talked about and we've identified throughout the utilization studies that have, that we've done with every one of your buildings. But we really need to dig deeper and start moving into this. Next steps, we need to scrub the data. So all this data, we're going to sit down with Brian and his team, we're going to sit down with administrative and Terry's team on cost, and we're going to scrub all this data one more time. And throughout that, we're going to, we're going to rank. So we're going to see priority ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives. Ones are immediate, there are life safety, a code violation, something that we need to take care of immediately. And then, down to fives are wish lists, things that we'd like to see in the future. Ultimately, out of this, we want to develop a roadmap for you. It's going to give you an immediate needs, the emergency things you were talking about, five-year plan, ten-year plan, twenty-year plan. Our recommendations always are, is that we start moving down this plan, we want to start developing a facilities committee, a group with, you know, hopefully some board members that are interested in participating in it. We'll be looking at building-level volunteers, people to come together and talk about this booklet of, you know, this is just a snapshot of, of the immediate, not including photographs and all the other backup documents that we, drawings we have. So that group can come together and look at this in a more involved basis. We'd be recommending that we tour each one of these buildings and really get down to the, to the details of what needs to be done. So that, before I jump into this, I just want to make sure, is there, and I know I went through that extremely fast, and it's a lot of information. We'll start sharing this out, and you guys are going to start being a part of, you know, whatever you guys need to get from Superintendent Solar, and we're, we're here to help you guys. So don't feel like it's, it's overwhelming. We'll break it down and we'll work through it piece by piece. And always, if you have any questions on any of it, just reach out and we'll be here to help you guys with it.
Okay. I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Okay, I was wondering first, if, I know that all of our buildings are very old, right? And there's a lot of lead? So I'm wondering, because I didn't see any lead up there, if there are any?
So every, every one of the buildings is identified with, with an environmental impact that we know we're going to have. So the district has what you call an adhere report that they keep up to date, so we have a pretty good idea of where most of it is
Okay.
through the historical data, what's been done and what's been touched. We also can generally tell just by looking at a lot of it. You get to be pretty familiar, know what you're looking for. Lead is one of those ones that's a little hidden, because you can't see it. Sometimes you find it in a surprise place, on tile in the hallways and things. So that'll all be inspected and checked. So we, we carry a contingency for that right now, based on the overall cost of the work. But as we start getting into where we know we're going to be in a project, if the adhere report that we have doesn't say specifically, we'll send in a team that's part of our incidental costs on a project, where they come in and do random sampling throughout the building to ensure we've covered those.
Okay. And then, I had another question. You had mentioned mold in one of the schools, and I'm sure Woodlawn. I'm wondering too, with the mold, you know, it's not good to smell.
We haven't seen any, I don't know of any exposure where we saw anything that we, you know, define as mold.
Okay.
There's water damage. We're seeing that there were signs of water. And most, most of the conditions that we've seen, the district's been very responsive at getting out there, stopping it. Mold is two things. It has to have water, and it has to have a food source. And if you take both of, you know, get those things out of there and clean it properly, you can take, you know, you can prohibit it and stop it.
Okay.
What we're, what we're fighting is that we have water infiltration.
Okay.
So we have a section at the high school where there's actually one of the additions, the, the kind of corner wing, actually all the way at the other end of this hallway. If you went all the way to the other end and make the turn, there's a corner wing. And you can see the grade out behind it climbs. There's, there tends to be a lot of moisture out in there. So there's some further, you know, exploration we need to do. There's a drain out there, why isn't that drain getting enough? Is it, you know, is there a problem down the road? You know, those types of things. At Steinmetz, there's, there's sub-level rooms that are halfway below grade, and you've just got a situation where maybe drain tiles broke, so the moisture's laying in that corner of the building, has nowhere to go. It's going to go its easiest route, it finds cracks in the masonry, so it's coming through. So that's really the stuff that we're seeing and identifying. Anything that we saw that, that would be suspect, we'd be flagging with your team to, to immediately address. And I don't, we didn't have anything like that that we've spotted.
Okay. And then, I have a question about Mount Pleasant. I don't know if this is the purview of your work, but the auditorium, for example, is really old? And is that something that you look at? And I know it's not all-inclusive, the list that you have there.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, it's been, I'm not picturing it in my head right now, I apologize.
It's okay.
Wooden seats.
Yeah, because you've got some extremely, you have, you have a few beautiful auditoriums. Yeah, it gets looked at. You've got to remember, you're building vintage, puts you in a historic nature.
Yes.
And SHIPO has to look at every project we do. SHIPO stands for State Historic Preservation and Office, thank you. So they have to look at every project, and we have to send them indications of the year when it was built, and we have to prove to them how, what, why, and how we're taking care of it. And when you get into auditoriums, it gets a little bit tricky, because sometimes you want to make some changes that they'll fight with. But yeah, that gets looked at historically for, I don't know that you have a building that we wouldn't have to talk to them about.
Okay.
Yeah, so it is included, you may have not seen it here.
Okay.
But in the breakdown of that Excel sheet, they, they go through literally every space.
Okay.
And look at everything, they go in lights, you know, outlets, hardware, furniture. And they also met with every building team, so every principal met with them to give them a preview of things that they're aware of that are problematic, because sometimes those things just don't come up. And so, I'm going to guarantee you that Principal B. probably mentioned the auditorium as well.
Okay.
But if you're going to do projects, it would just be as, where is that, is that a priority in comparison to everything else in that building? But yeah, every, every space will have a ranking of condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Does it make sense to do projects, for example, I noticed sanitary sewers in virtually every building as a, does it make sense to do, to do the projects at all, all sanitary sewers in all schools at one time? Because you've got, you know, your, your contractors and so forth, you know, as opposed to concentrating by school, concentrate on the topic, so to speak, the defects?
It's a great question. And, and we'll look at that as we start mapping them out. You have to remember that a lot of the sanitary sewer and a lot of your domestic lines are buried. They're hidden in the walls, they're not exposed, they're under the floor. So when we look at those projects, what we're looking, we're looking to try to maximize. You want to try to look at your needs and what do you want, and how do we overlay those two areas to be in the same place? If we're going to come into a room and do work on it, we want to make sure that we take care of all that sanitary that we can touch in that area. But it may not be advantageous. It's a great thought, because yeah, it'd be great if I can get a plumber in here, one big job, and go through and do it. The problem is to get that in, he's going to go in and tear places apart that we're not going to have money allocated for, and we're not going to be able to finish them. So then, we're going to work on them a little bit, and then, in the next project, you're going to come back and hit it. So that's why you start seeing the incremental, we try to, you're trying to take care of everything holistically in each component and move your, move the whole ball forward.
Are the sidewalks around this high school, particularly out here on Plaza, are those the responsibility of the school district or the city?
I, I don't personally know that, but I can find out for you. I can double-check.
I mean, I know that sidewalks are generally purchased, a requirement of the homeowners and so forth, but, but the sidewalk out here, which of course gets a lot of use, is pretty deplorable.
Yeah, I'd have to look. It's going to depend on where your, where the property line falls out there and, and what the, you know, if there's any kind of agreement. But we can look into that and get back to you.
All those water things, there's a reason why this was called the swamp. I live very close by, so I understand that completely. The next question I have is regarding the finances, because in the last two capital projects, we were very careful not to, I mean, we, we get a lot of building aid, we were at about ninety-seven percent, I think.
Yep.
And then, the balance was able to be covered by Excel monies, I think, from twelve or fifteen or eighteen years ago, and then, some additional reserves. But there's a maximum building amount, a building allowance or something like?
Maximum, yeah, there's maximum cost allowance, that's.
So how are we approaching putting those numbers together to know what we can do with each school?
So that, when we get to that point, so there's two things. We did the utilization study, and part of the reason I love getting the utilization study done upfront is because it gives me a great tool to turn over and recalc all of your maximum cost allowance. So, and again, this is where we start getting the anagram, the little abbreviated names, please feel free to ask, but MCA is what we'll refer to it as a lot. That's the maximum cost allowance. Each building you own is identified with a maximum cost allowance. The state allows you to spend up to that expense every five years in doing work on your capital improvements to your building. On top of that maximum, or part of that maximum cost allowance is an incidental budget. So the, on a high school, in a middle school, you're allowed twenty-five percent of that, and that money then is used for anything site-related, any furniture, any non-physically-built, any non-physically built, even though site is a physical build, for whatever reason, they've decided it should be incidental. Uh, so anything outside your building and then anything that you do, um, services for architects, testing, legal fees, anything like that come out of incidental. Um, but every five years that gets regenerated. So we look at when was your last project? Where are those monies? We'll be partnering with, with Mr. Galouli and his team and your financial consultant for the district. So that overlay is part of this process. And you're going to see that as we start to develop it. Because we don't want to cap, we don't want to pass those. If you pass those, it's local share. So we need to develop this plan, taking that into consideration. And when we talk about these buildings, you know, the projects that you've just recently worked on, you spent significant amounts of money in there against that MCA. So that's going to put a, you know, even though you may have some priorities, some of that may have to push out further just because of those timeframes.
Do we have a timeline for, um, looking at going to the public for a capital project approval?
Not at this point.
I mean, like next May, a year from now or something?
Actually, next month. No, just kidding.
I know better than that.
I think what's, I think what's important is that, um, like Rich show you the next kind of steps and pieces that'll kind of answer those questions. So one, one thing that I want to be is real intentional because some of our buildings, again, like high school being one in particular, has a significant need. But we've also talked about, you know, potentially programmatically redesigning some of the experience here. And so one doesn't make sense to tackle the high school. And then the thing with any of our school buildings is swing space, right? Because if you have kids in the building, it takes you longer to do some of the work because you're still using it during the day. And so we have to be real calculated. And I know early on, you know, there was concern about Steinmetz and things of that nature. But we need to really have a larger conversation before we do anything significant. So the utilization piece, which Rich is going to get into next, talks to that. And that says, how are we using our current buildings right now? What did we say we were doing with them? How often is a classroom being used? You know, and, you know, we would love for everyone to have their own classroom. So how often do we share? Often do we not? You know, some schools have, some of our elementary schools have a gym and an auditorium. Or I'm sorry, a gym and a cafeteria. Some of our schools don't. The cafeteria, they have a cafeteria. And so that creates some challenges programmatically. So I think if Rich can keep going through, I think some of that, you'll start to see how he answer. But if you go back to the slide about the planning piece, we're going to develop the plan of how, how and when we go out based on the conversation. So we're just at the little big red dot, thousand foot, and now we're starting to move over. And now we'll start to develop the concepts. We'll start to prioritize. But then at some point, we'll come back to the board to say, here's where, this facility committee will come back to say, here's our priorities. We believe we should do X, Y for this amount of money. Maximum cost allowance will be X and Y. And then we'll go out to the voters. And it could be, you know, sometime next year. It could be in the summer. Um, you know, we're going to have to figure that out. But what we want to do is be real deliberate, uh, as we move forward in terms of only handling priorities and then really developing a plan to go after this because it's pretty overwhelming, um, two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty million dollars. And, you know, and the, the other worry is where would we put kids? If we did do construction to some of these sites, where would the kids go? Because all of our schools are being used except for Fulton at this point.
Is our oldest building Lincoln? And our newest one Woodlawn? And, and Woodlawn, I think, has gone on the historic register now because it's more than fifty years old. So, and I think it's the newest building. And I think Lincoln, I know Lincoln is nineteen oh two, but, um, but I'm not sure about the interior of S C L A, um, because that was McKinley's school. And I'm not sure what's, that section might have, where it aged from.
They're all on SHIPO though.
Yeah, we, we have that all on vintage plans that identify that as part of this whole package. So you'll be able to see those snapshots.
You can go to the utilization.
Yep. Uh, I, I did not bring every floor plan, but I wanted to just kind of bring back up and remind everybody what's been done. So what we do is we take a look at the entire floor plan. We sit and work with the building administration and we go through every space. And we identify what each space is being used for. Who's in it? What class? How often? How many periods is it being used? Are we meeting the expectations of state ed? Uh, up on the top, it's very small, but the chart up on the top actually coordinates enrollment with your building and cross-references that against the classes, how many students we have in each room versus what state standards are and recommendations are. So we've done this for every one of the buildings. And now from this point, what we can do is we can take snapshot looks at test fits. What happens if we, if we shuffle this around? Or we change this? Or what happens if you move enrollment from, maybe, you know, you guys just set new rules on, or you're talking about the new contractual obligations for class sizes? Well, that has a direct impact on exactly what this plan says. How many ninth grade English classrooms do I need? How many twelfth grade math classes do I need? So all that data is calculated onto the sheet. And the beauty of using the colors is that you start seeing where things scatter, where things fall and how you're using them now. The, the fun part about this is that most of the information we come up with is not construction-related. It really becomes how are we utilizing our buildings? Are we, what is the day in the life of a student? Um, how are they traversing the building? Are we student-centric? Are we teacher-centric? How are we operating? So that's really this tool and the work, which is, for me, a lot of fun to work with the administrators, developing out what it is. And now throughout the next process, the goal is to see where can it go? How can we better take advantage of them? And then how can we better take advantage of all the buildings you have here in the district? And that's what this tool has provided us. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Anibal and I'm going to let him wander through some of these projects here.
Yeah. Go ahead, Alistair. It's all yours. It's a hard act to follow. Um, okay, so obviously with the, the BCS, uh, we're going to be working with the district to try and formulate a project. In the meantime, we have projects that are on the go. Um, there is the hundred K project, which is your water heater replacement over at the swimming pool. Um, we believe you, there was, we're ready to submit that, um, next month. Uh, we have everything ready to go. We figure that S E D turnaround right now is roughly about twelve weeks. So we're looking to try and bid this out around about Thanksgiving. Um, the pool diving board, starting blocks. Um, as you're aware, um, diving board was installed earlier this year. Um, the resealing, the pool was completed last week. Um, the, it was an interesting experience. They went down and we saw some interesting videos because the, a short version. I'll give you a short story. So when we did the geotech, it transpires that, as you know, the swamp, there's a water table about nine feet down, but your swimming pool is about thirteen feet down. So when they emptied it, water wanted to find its way back up there. So we approached. Yes. So we approached and said, look, we need to solve this before you start filling back with water. And they, they said, sure, we can do two things and they'll tell us what they are. And they eventually said, at no cost to the district and no impact at time, that they were going to basically put the material and labor forth to patch all the holes that were in, the tiny microscopic holes, but enough that your pool is looking pretty, pretty good. You know, and it's going to last for many, many years.
It's opening up next week. Moran is opening it, so.
Yep. Um, and the starting blocks, uh, we are in the process of getting them installed, um, once they're revised. Let's see.
Does S E D still have, um, uh, the priority where you can pay extra if you need approval more quickly than their normal time?
You can. Third-party review, I think typically is a twelve-week turnaround anyway. And when we see the use of that is when the S E D, um, review times are pushing out to sixteen, twenty in some cases, like when I, when I came on board, it was, we were looking at thirty, I think it was thirty-eight weeks in some of the projects.
It's very long.
Or over a year in some cases.
They didn't have nearly enough people.
Yeah.
Now they're back to twelve weeks.
They still don't have enough people. I mean, that's, I wouldn't hide behind that. But they are getting better at, at being more, turning things around.
They were using third-party, uh, engineering firms to review it.
Yeah. And we, we're also an approved third-party reviewer as well for S E D. So it's still being used. Um, and what we find is actually the, the federal fund monies, or federal fund projects get pushed through faster, which is important. Let's see, so which one is it? Right, yeah. Um, you recognize this?
Yeah.
This was an interesting period of my life.
It's hard to believe that this could be operating in a month for a game.
Yeah. So I understand from talking to Dr. Coro, it was a, a very, very good day.
Yes, so thank you for your hard work, Alistair. We pushed, but we got it done.
We got it done, yeah. I was, uh, it was, it came down to the wire, but we got it. Um, the high school tennis court reconstruction, right now we're progressing from DD set into CD drawings. Um, we'll be, we're working with, with our electrical engineers for the site lighting. Um, it goes around both the tennis courts, but also partly the parking. Um, there's additional parking, as you can see, for what's been offset by the, the increase of the two, um, tennis courts. Uh, we'll be looking to, um, I believe we're looking to push this. This is a repair fund project, so we're, yeah, as soon as possible, I think.
Board already approved the repair fund.
Yes. Uh, Steinmetz, uh, we're also reviewing, um, this building itself does not have any kind of secure entry vestibule currently. Um, we're reviewing this and trying to see how best to bring visitors into the building. Um, this is an ongoing project that Rich is working with Tyron on right now.
Yeah, so if you look at. If you look at the dotted outline in there, that's the current vestibule where most of your public enters, enters the building. And you just kind of, you come through a vestibule and then you're walking into the building and there's nowhere to, to hold back anybody, any, any public coming through the building. So if you look in the, in the far left side here, what we're going to do is there's a conference room that's directly adjacent to the vestibule. We're going to put a window through that wall, a new door. Um, take reception and the greeter that's sitting there right now in the hallway, move, move that individual into this room. And then as people are allowed through, uh, an Aphone system, just like you have at some of your other newer vestibules, you'll buzz, come into the first vestibule, you're greeted through a window, then you're welcomed into there, into that office where you're getting controlled by doors so that somebody in the building, if you do need to enter the building, can come and get you. So again, you're trying to slow the progress of people entering. And the reality is the window provides two things. Most of the time, people arriving are dropping something off. They don't need to come into our building. So this gives you an arrival point and you can just hand something through a window. But it also gives you a point for a raptor check, to check on our, our safety system. And if somebody shouldn't be in the building, we're stopping them before they even get to those first levels. So this is an opportunity where we can do some small changes to a space that's there and get this going quickly. We're, we're trying to see how we can make this happen. Again, it's, it's material, so maybe not opening of school, but we're going to try to make it happen as soon as we can.
Yeah, and, and Board Member Parsons, this goes back to your question around security. This is a security issue. So right now, if someone would get in, they could go right into the building. So what we want to do is stop them. And so that, that way, at least if they do get in the first door, they stay in that vestibule. And so, so win- windows are a big problem, right?
Oh, yeah.
Is it like that for all the schools, this vestibule thing?
So we're going to, a lot of schools miss, are missing them and don't have them. So that's a priority. So like Page is another example that doesn't really have a true vestibule. And so those are things that we're going to have to create and/or create a maybe temporary solution. And then when we do a larger project, have more permanent solution. But a lot of our schools do not have, you know, you think of even Howe, Howe Elementary. As soon as you walk up the steps, you open the door, you're right in. See your mom as soon as I walk in, she's right at the desk. She doesn't have a secure vestibule to lock someone in in case an intruder or somebody tried to get in and didn't have permission. You know, there's no way for her to scan them.
Which is a true challenge.
Yeah.
Because your elementary is, is at a different level than even your, your main rooms or first floors. So how do we find out spaces where this is a correct, part of this?
And I, and I know it's a, it was a tragic way to learn a lesson, but if you've had an opportunity to read the Uvalde report, the findings, some of those things were those low-hanging fruit items where they just didn't, they never fixed certain doors. They kept certain doors propped open and, you know, didn't have a secure vestibule. You know, those are the things that, you know, we hope that never happened here, but we have to take these precautions to figure out. And I know Jeff is all over that and making sure we get in compliance, um, on those areas, so.
Um, and it, as I mentioned earlier on, there's, there's a number of federal fund, federally funded projects that we're looking to pursue. Um, in addition, uh, we've got the Mont Pleasant, uh, middle school track. We're looking right now at some potential options for a repurposed, or a new kind of track plus turf field, which will be in conjunction with how, how the school, you know, approaches that field. Especially if we're also looking at that boiler trimmy. You know, if that does come down, then it opens up that, that back area. Um, the playground upgrades. Um, we had a, uh, auditor come around and review all thirteen playgrounds. Um, I think the next slide might be that, but, um, he's finished with that. Our next step right now is we, we have like a scale in terms of this, it's, it's reviewed on a one to five scale. One being the one where it's literally closed down right away and five is just continual maintenance. A lot of your playgrounds have, they've not been maintained or they've fallen into disrepair. Some of it is just through age, some of it is just through vandalism, really. Um, so we've, the reports are pretty dense, uh, but we've gone through them and, um, we can start kind of like saying which ones are the high priorities. And then at that point, we move forward and we start, um, approaching like how we address each one. Um, there's also, um, mechanical upgrades we'll be looking at and also kitchen equipment as part of the federally funded projects.
And so just to clarify for you, in American Rescue Plan, we put money aside to go after some of these things, you know, every playground and every elementary school. So, uh, when we got that influx of American Rescue Plan, we put about five million, well, not only in the reserve, but also in our A R P. This is where this is coming from. So this is separate from the reserve. The capital reserve that was approved, the five million, that's the, the tennis courts in the parking lot.
Yep.
That was part of that work. But this is, so I just want to make sure this has been budgeted for. Uh, and when Alistair talked about that federal money projects getting a little bit more of an ex added approval, some of these things will be hopefully easier for us to get through S E D because it's using the money that the government gave us to create, you know, outdoor learning spaces, uh, you know, because of the pandemic, to create other opportunities for our kids to engage. So the big thing for the playgrounds that wasn't mentioned that will come up in the audit is ADA accessibility and making sure that students in wheelchairs could also have equipment at these playgrounds. So go ahead, Alistair.
Yep. I mean, yeah, part of the audit has a whole section about ADA. Um, the emergency projects we've got going on as well, in addition, and running in conjunction with the federal funded projects is the boiler over at Fulton, which failed. And we're looking right now to try and expedite that process through, um, state contract. Um, Page Elementary School, um, has, there's an issue in the, the crawl space right now where you can't actually get in to maintain any of the leaking pipes because there's not enough oxygen to be able to even, for any of us even to get down and review. So we're approaching that as, um, all the kind of insulation that's around the piping will be abated and we'll go in and be able to then put in, bring in fresh air so that, um, staff can go down there safely, um, review the, the piping and then, um, address as needed for the stuff that's, that's failing. Um, Washington Irving is a, is, is basically a full, um, rehab of the domestic water through system, all the way from the main tee in the road, all the way up into the building and throughout. Because it's been, it's been an ongoing project, I believe, that Jesse has been trying to maintain, but it's, it just, it needs more attention, I guess.
Yeah, and so that's why Page did not have summer program because we've shut it down to do the abatement so that we could actually have our staff take care of these problems. They couldn't go in there because they couldn't even breathe. You would, you would run out of oxygen. And so we couldn't do any of that work. So you remember during the school year, we had to close one day at Page? It was because there was leakage in that area and we couldn't access it, so.
Um, this is actually just a, I won't spend too much time on this, but this is what I was talking about with the playgrounds. Um, each of them, whenever you see level, uh, twos or ones is where it gets more, uh, it's a bit more of a concern. Um, these just refer to the equipment that's, uh, within the playgrounds. It does not address necessarily the, the ADA issues that they have. Um, fortunately, you know, Woodlawn, Pleasant Valley, Page, and Lincoln all kind of like are fairly, um, the, the equipment there is in good shape. But as you can see on the right-hand side, um, Fulton being the top right-hand image, um, understandably, with no kids in the building, it's, 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 uh, fallen into disrepair. Um, there's a lot of overgrown weeds and grass and such. Um, the photo in the middle point is just, is nowadays, with, with around the playgrounds, you have, um, they'll have rubber or plastic kind of guards to maintain, uh, the, the wood chips. This is an instance of where rebar, or reinforcing rod has come up back through, when it's the freeze thaw cycle around winter, and of course, it's danger. Uh, the bottom photo is actually just where the wood chips have worn away, and there's exposed concrete foundation underneath, uh, one of the, the slides, which is also a health hazard.
Just, can you go back?
Yep.
So just to know that we'll have to take action on some of these, that will, may negatively impact some of our schools, so Van Corleere is one in particular. We're gonna have to, you know, close that playground, because through the audit, it said it's just too unsafe right now, and so that will impact us as we move forward. And so those level ones are gonna be real important for us to go after right away.
Yep.
Because then schools don't have playgrounds, and so when we talk about recess, uh, you know, that kind of stuff. So, the good thing is, we did this audit. The second good thing is, we have the money set aside in the Federal Reserve, and then the tough part is, we're gonna be getting, by the time we get this work, it'll be getting cold out, so a lot of it probably won't happen until the spring, uh, typically, or the end of the following year, just given the timelines of how this work works, so.
Are all of our playgrounds accessible after school, or non-accessible, or is it a mixture, or what? I mean, I, you know, kids in the neighborhood would love to play on playgrounds, I assume, but I don't know if we have them open or not.
So, just to, I can make sure I address the accessibility, though, some have some opportunities, but part of this is, there's a huge section of this report that addresses ADA accessibility. Um, I, I know that certain playgrounds are behind locked fences.
Well, that's what I was talking about more, I know about the ADA not being in place.
So that's an operational, um, you know, I mean, there's things that could be done and, and put in place to allow, whether, you know, we work a lot with playgrounds, and we put in navigable, navigable, little kind of twisting gate areas, so you can slow down getting, you know, people getting bikes, and other things in those areas, but that's something we need to understand.
Yeah, so part of the district's prior practice was to close them, and so we've been working to change that practice. You know, if we're gonna move to a community school model type of, uh, district, that means our resources need to be open to the community after hours, and so part of that is our approach and mindset. So we have had to have worked with facilities to say, look, you can't lock them, you can't close them, but their, their struggle and challenges that then they get damaged, or somebody gets hurt at night, and sometimes we don't have the mechanism. So it's a fine balance, but I will tell you that our, or my vision is that they will be accessible, so when the school day's over, kids can get on there, families can take their kids, they're in these communities, they can walk in there and use these facilities. I mean, these are their schools, technically, so, you know, why should we prohibit that? But it is a fine line, so do we have cameras to supervise to watch for damage? Do we have other mechanisms to try to monitor and mitigate that? But hopefully, that the community will take care of it, because it's also their resource, and so part of that's gonna be educating. Um, but yes, we do have some that are locked still, and some that are open, as we encounter them, like Van Corleere will be locked. It's a different community, it's not so much neighborhood, but it's one that I know I've walked to and seen it locked, and I'm like, why? But, you know, people protect there, they wanna make sure it's available to the kids when they show up the next morning, and so it's a fine line, as opposed to finding the seesaw bent or broken, and, and then, you know, the seesaw's a big deal.
Um, this is just another slide, an example of, um, some of the kind of damage or, you know, worn-away, um, wood chips. Top right-hand image is actually a bullet hole in one of the, the kind of the canopies over one of the, the kind of playground structures, which our, um, auditor pointed out, and he just kind of wrote an email immediately to me, and he's like, I'd, I'd never seen this before. So, um, basically, we're, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna go through each of the playgrounds, we're gonna work out, you know, in order to create equity across all thirteen of them, and make sure that we're addressing both ADA and safety, um, of the playgrounds. And that pretty much brings us to a close.
So any other questions for SEI or myself?
Is there any tentative timeline for what the next step is, or?
With the playground.
The biggest next milestone, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
So our, our immediate is, we actually, um, we stole a little of Brian's time prior to him joining, uh, because we knew this was coming, and with, with, uh, with him being appointed by the board, uh, we reached out, and he gave us some of his time to spend a day, and we did tours, so that hopefully started and kicked that off. Our next immediate thing is to scrub that data, which will be a couple of days of sitting down and just going through all that in a small group. But following that is where we really need to, we can move as fast as the district can move with us. And that's in developing a facilities committee at each one of the building levels, and kind of a tiered group, and we'll work with you on, on kind of crafting, um, possible potential people to be on it. Not specific people, but just the numbers and how. Um, obviously, you don't wanna turn it into a huge event, because you're gonna go through a lot of detail, and we wanna try to move through it. Um, so we'll be looking at when we can do that, uh, when we can start setting up schedules and meetings at the building levels to talk further, and that'll be, we're gonna continue the meetings that we have been doing with administration, focused on, besides the conditions, program improvements, building utilizations, where are we using it? So, all of that is, it's already ongoing, we've already started it, now we need to take it to those next levels, where we develop the committee that will start focusing on that, and hopefully, move towards a detailed recommendation that will come back to this board, where we share, here's the recommendation from the committee, that we recommend we do this work, this priority, this cost, in this direction, so.
So thank you, Rich, Alistair, and Matt. Thank you for the presentation, have a good night.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So the next item on the agenda is the vaccination requirement for sports participation. A resolution approving a vaccination requirement for sports participation. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved, Erica.
Erica, second?
Second, Nolani.
Thank you, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Policy update, a resolution adopting the following updated policies. Policy five fifty-three thirty, budget transfers. Policy sixty-one hundred, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. Policy ninety-one hundred, equal opportunities in educational programs. Policy ninety-one ten, Title IX sex discrimination. Policy ninety-one twenty, unlawful discrimination and harassment for employees. Policy ninety-one twenty-one, sexual harassment in the workplace. Policy ninety-two ten, accommodations for individuals with disabilities. And policy ninety-two twenty, unlawful discrimination and harassment for students. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved, Nolani.
Nolani, thank you, second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. This, any discussion?
I had some questions, Martha, I think you replied to me on some of these, it wasn't?
Yeah, and a couple, we have to follow up with legal on a couple of the questions, because we did not necessarily have it in-house, but, uh, most of them won't change, these are pretty much aligned to law, uh, in these areas, but there was, I know some follow-up you had regarding some clarity regarding, I think like in the ninety-one hundreds, what, what goes away, what, what's still there, so. These did go through committee twice, and so, um, but we will definitely still follow up on those items once we can get ahold of, I know Andrew was working on getting ahold of the attorney to kind of clarify some of those points. So, if we have to bring back a revision based on your questions, we will, uh, but we'll get your response.
I knew, I'd seen partial response, and I wasn't sure what, um, what happened in the other.
And for the newer board members, these policies and procedures are updated regularly to ensure that the district practices comply with federal, state, um, and local laws. So many of the things that you'll see listed today, they're something that we do annually. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Student placements, a resolution approving the placement of certain special education students or pupils. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica, second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Personnel items, a resolution approving consent items eight A one through eight B as in boy five concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept the motion to approve these items, motion?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
So, I just wanna recognize, uh, the approval of one of the appointments tonight. Uh, Wendy, I believe, is in the audience. Uh, Wendy is one of our IB teachers, and she'll be joining the administrative team at the high school as an assistant principal, so I just wanna make sure.
Congratulations, and welcome.
Thank you, Wendy.
And we, the motion carries, okay? A resolution ratifying a memorandum of agreement between the Schenectady City School District and the Schenectady Federation of Teachers. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Nolani.
Thank you, Nolani, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion?
I asked a lot of questions about it, um, which I think all of you have seen the replies, so I, I think, uh, shoot, I just lost it, they were, I, I think those were, um, satisf, satisfactory for, for me, um, in that regard, so.
And prior to that, too, we had some good conversations, Annabelle shared a lot of information, so we had some time to think about it and to ask questions as well, so thank you for that, okay?
I just have a question, some of the concerns that were raised, they're gonna be addressed in the emails regarding this, um, the FISA.
The FISA.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I just wanna take a point of personal privilege if I tend to board president. I just wanna thank our partners in the SFT, uh, President Benacosta, who's in the audience, Vice President Silvestri for our work. It was a good collaborative work, we, uh, tugged and pulled on each other's sides, but I think we got an agreement that is reflective of the board's priorities around, um, respecting the work of our teachers, uh, improving access to our teachers, to our students, uh, allowing the district to go after some things like increased instructional time, more contact with some of our staff members, uh, but also honoring the profession by increasing planning time for some of our elementary teachers, um, and, you know, going after some mandates. So I do wanna recognize the efforts of, of both the president and vice president of SFT, because collectively, I think we got to a really great spot. Historical contract for our district in the sense of, you know, was some level of compensation, but I think it was, uh, well-deserved. So I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to business items. A resolution authorizing the payment of real estate taxes and installments. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion?
Let me give you a little background on this one, just as a point of order, because this happened probably thirty years ago, or thereabouts. The city charter was being revised, uh, or they were anxious to revise it, and they failed to allow the continuation of installment payments for both the city taxes and school taxes. And it went down, the revisions went down after months and months, if not years, of work on that city charter. Um, we are one of the very few school districts where taxes are on an installment basis, just as a point of order. So, I just thought you'd like to know.
The business office reminds us all the time.
Thank you, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A resolution equalizing valuations of the real property and setting the tax rates for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for the city of Schenectady, or the city school district with the city of Schenectady and the town of Rotterdam. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Nolani, second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any discussion?
I, I must have missed it in here, I didn't see kind of what the tax rate becomes in the city of Schenectady per thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Twenty, it's, uh, it's in section three, tax rate per thousand assessed value for the city of, Schenectady is twenty dollars and forty-two cents.
And twenty dollars, two, two oh eight.
And twenty dollars two oh eight.
Okay, I did see that, yeah, sorry.
So it's a difference of twenty cents.
It's all those six other digits after the decimal point that threw me off there.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, a resolution awarding a contract as a result of requests for proposals for special education and related services. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica, second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Lot of services there. Lot of contracts there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? The motion carries. A resolution awarding contracts as a result of public sale of surplus and obsolete equipment. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. I saw you moving, Prinsella. Second?
Second.
Vivian?
Thank you, Vivian.
Yay, your first motion. Right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. A resolution approving a corrective action plan for the internal audit. Uh, I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution, motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy, second? I'll second it, Bernice. Um, any discussion? Kathy is our audit chair, and I was wondering, would you, would you like to say any comments around that?
Uh, just a, a few comments, every year, this is, this is an internal audit that we do, it's not our external audit, which comes to us in October. Um, the internal audit, it, we, we have a risk assessment done every year, and, and the committee determines from what's presented by the auditors, what kind of area we would like to have them look at. In this case, we had them look at Chromebooks, uh, and the, uh, mobile equip, mobile, um, devices that we had acquired, uh, during the pandemic, before the pandemic and during the pandemic. And, and it was that we, we were fairly certain that, you know, we weren't sure what had happened with a lot of those, and, and of course, this was confirmed. So this action plan is, is, um, getting into place more procedures and more, um, systemization, shall I say, with regard to control of, uh, over the purchase of the, of things such as the Chromebooks, over, over, uh, how we account for them, who has them, and the hotspots as well, and then what happens when they're destroyed, or they're, um, uh, damaged and so on, and, and then disposal of those. So that's what the corrective action plan addresses, and it's required by, um, SED as, as a, um, a follow-up to the audit report that was prepared.
And I do wanna thank Prinsella, because she's also on the audit committee, thank you, okay? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. These are comments, we have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members.
Uh, if I recall correctly, did we not have an article recently on the disposition of Elmer School, that that was going to go forward, because I don't think we mentioned that here in our meeting.
Yeah, so, uh, the governor did allocate and approve, um, so, uh, through the BCNI, actually is the organization, uh, they're acquiring it to become apartments, so, uh, I think they're looking at a November timeline potentially to, for us to hand over the property, um, so we've already been in contact with the folks over at Metroplex and BCNI, um, to talk about what the acquisition looks like. So we'll have the building empty and ready, which is part of that surplus that we did earlier in the year. We did a, a huge auction with all the stuff in there, and so the building will be empty, ready, and it'll go to, uh, the project to be converted to apartments, so that will no longer be, uh, a property of the Schenectady City.
And the sale price is four fifty, if I recall.
Yeah, the district will get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and there's an additional compensation because of the, we extended it, so they are paying for the utilities, so it could potentially be around five hundred.
We've extended, we've extended it several years, because it's not a building that has ready marketability.
Right, but they, they received the, I think it was about twenty million dollars to start the refurbishing of it. So it's gonna be, I don't know how many units, but it's gonna be, uh, uh, housing for, I believe, seniors.
I think the, um, neighborhood will be grateful for it, no one likes to have abandoned buildings around, so it's, it's a good thing.
That's why you didn't see it in the building condition.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, to mention it, because I think we had discussed the, uh, Elmer Avenue School, um, a few months back, before, when we were extending it, I think, and then it came after, after that, so, that was all.
Thank you. So if there's no further business to discuss, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting, motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Prinsella.
Just a reminder, August seventeenth at six-thirty is the next board meeting, so just wanna make sure, remind the folks in the public.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand up and leave.
Have a great evening, everyone, board members, community members, staff, and stay cool.
Stay cool, it's just warming up in here.
Yeah, I know.